Forty percent of that fund will then be distributed to DOLA in their division of housing, and that's going to be used again for a housing support fund. Some of the real broad criteria that you have to look at if you're looking at wanting to tap into these funds is that for rental housing, it has to be rental housing that is equal to or less than sixty percent of the AMI, the area man- medium income. That's for rental, so sixty percent or below. If it's rental housing, if it's for sale, housing, it can be at a hundred percent of AMI or below. Let's see if there's something else that's need to communicate there. And it should be designated or set up, the product should be set up that where it is, the rent or the mortgage payment should cost less than thirty percent of the buyers' or renters' monthly income. Now, the financing fund that I mentioned, it's going to be, again, that's going to be administered by CHAFA. They're going to be doing three different primary efforts along for those monies. One of those is going to be land banking, so they're looking at taking fifteen to twenty-five percent of the fund and putting it towards land banking. This could be grants to local governments and forgivable loans to nonprofits for acquisition of properties. There'll be an equity program, it's going to be about forty to seventy percent of the program. You can see some of these percentages are pretty white, so they're really still trying to feel out quite a bit of this. But this equity program will look at investment in permanently affordable multifamily rental developments and building tenant equity in those developments. And then there'll be a debt program, around fifteen or fifteen to thirty-five percent. And this will be for financing low and middle income multifamily rental developments. Okay, the other fund that I mentioned, the support fund that will be administered through DOLA, that's going to be broken up about half of it to homeownership. And so this is going to be primarily down payment assistance, and then could also be grants for mobile home park purchases. There is going to be up to forty-five percent of that fund towards homelessness. This will be for rental assistance, housing vouchers, eviction defense, and then potentially grants for supportive housing and other activities. And then there's a small, up to about five percent, that could be used for planning capacity. So this would be for local governments to use towards, I'm trying to figure out and do some planning on how you could best use the funds. So all great stuff. Where we are right now is that we're in the process, there's a, what I'm not going to go into too much detail is the criteria for qualifying for use of this. There's quite a bit of things that the local governments that want to take advantage of this program or these various programs and monies would have to do to qualify. There are, there are provisions within your land use code that you have to look at adopting. There are fast-tracking processes in your development review process that you need to look at adopting. There are a number of things along those kind of lines, there are commitments as to how many units you would bring on per year. So it's pretty extensive, and that's going to take pretty much from now towards around the last or towards the end of this year and to get a lot of that stuff done. But where we are right now is trying to determine a baseline for each of the jurisdictions that could potentially take advantage of these monies. So they're looking at, at working with locals to try and determine, okay, where is what would be established as a baseline of affordable units in your jurisdiction? And there's a lot of different ways you can kind of go about doing that. It varies by, you know, the size of municipality, different issues like that. So I just wanted to communicate to council, that's what our staff is busy on doing. Andrew and his staff are working on this right now on trying to put together, you know, a good solid data set that will help us set our baseline. And then that baseline helps determine your eligibility, your summary eligibility for applying for these funds that you would, based on your baseline, you'd have to do a certain number of units per year, basically comes down to about three percent increase in the number of units you have per year for three years and a nine percent overall increase. And I don't want to get too far into the weeds because some of this could change too. So there's legislation out in the state house right now that's floating around that could potentially change some of these criteria or how some of this is administered as well. So that's something that we're keeping an eye on as well. But wanted to bring it to council's attention because it's a very, it's a hot topic right now among locals. And it's really because CHAFA and DOLA have just come out within the past week or so with some of this initial direction on where they're going and working with locals on this. So you might hear other folks, you know, some of your contemporaries that or other people in the, in the community talking about Prop 123. And you sharing in doing this, are we on, yes, we are, we're keeping track of this, we're doing the work we need to do. And hopefully, I'm very hopeful we'll be able to take advantage of this possibly with some of the units that are, Housing Authority is looking at doing on some of the properties that they have. So some of that would be potentially some very good things. There's also some of the efforts around homelessness with Tri-Cities that could potentially be used or tap into these funds as well. So it's great, we're happy to see this, we're happy to see that the state's moving forward. And we'll make sure that we're keeping track of where we need to be to make sure that we're eligible to take advantage when and or when that becomes available. The House with regards to land use and affordable housing. And this all stemmed from some comments that the governor made in his State of the State speech with regards to efforts that he would like to see for promoting more housing, more affordable housing in the state. And the heartburn is, is, is the details about how is that going to work? How would that be? Would there be a widespread preemption at the state level of local land use authority? Which, as you guys know, we've, has been an issue with locals, the county municipal league, Colorado counties and others for preserving local land use authority and making sure that decisions with regards to zoning and housing take place at the local level and not on a statewide level. Now, to that order, I think that the locals are trying to put together, at least here at Arapahoe County, we've been having discussions at the city manager and staff levels with regards, okay, how or what do we address these issues as they come up in the state house? One of the difficulties right now is that there's not a bill yet. So there's a lot of discussions, and there's a team from the governor's office that is meeting with folks and going and, and, and kind of doing a listening tour, those kind of efforts that are going on right now. So we're trying to just determine, all right, how do we communicate in Arapahoe County with our state legislators and others? Some very specific items really around, all right, what are we already doing around affordable housing, which is quite a bit? What have we already done with our land use to try and facilitate those kinds of projects? Things along those lines. So our, our public information officers from all the cities have met. They've put together a communications plan that's in draft right now and will be reviewed by a subgroup of the mayor's managers, commissioners group from Arapahoe County to look at doing just that, communicating what we've already done, how we're doing it, and how can the state help? Rather than saying, hey, just, you know, just don't state, leave us alone, do, do those kind of things, you can't do that. Let's say, hey, you know what would be helpful with some of the efforts that we're currently doing? This would be helpful if the state could do this, you know, one big one out there, construction defects law. The state legislature could fix that, and that would be a huge, huge help for development of density and affordable housing around transit stops, be huge help. So there are items along those kind of lines that we at the local level are trying to identify so that we can then communicate those to our state legislatures as this, this goes through. I think this is going to be one of those items that kicks around through the whole session until the end. And we'll see if it, if it ends up moving forward or not. It could break in, you know, there's tots of, or talk around an omnibus bill that's very large or is it get broken out into different bills, you know? There's other things floating around out there with rent control bills and other things out there. So it'll be very interesting to see, we're trying to keep an eye on that. And we're also, like I said, really trying to get our ducks in a row of how do we communicate that with our legislators to try and be proactive when working with them and saying, here's how I can help, right? In those efforts, so like I said, there is a, there is a communication plan that's really kind of been outlined. It's in draft form right now, but it's being finalized. There is going to be a delegation from the mayor's managers and commissioners group, Arapahoe County, small delegation that will be going to the Capitol and having a lunch meeting with our legislators at the Capitol on March 24th. So there's going to be that outreach. And then on Thursday, March 30th, there's going to be a countywide telephone town hall on housing and land use in Arapahoe County where there'll be some more discussions about, here's some of the efforts that the various municipalities, the counties and others are doing around land use specific to affordability for housing. So those are some of the initial efforts that we're working on, start probably here, some of those, it's going to get, this item is going to become more and more popular, and you'll hear more and more about it as we move through the legislative process. So I just want you know, we're, we're part of that as well in making, making sure that our voices are heard as part of that. Let's see. I think, Mayor. Trying to see which one of these we've already informed the council on and that. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago of our Tri-City, Tri-Cities Homeless Policy Committee, our steering committee for that. And one of the items that I thought was, was kind of fun, there's a lot of efforts going on around, around the homeless and around affordable housing. And one of the items that, that Inglewood brought forward was doing a golf tournament at Broken T to raise money for the South Metro Community Foundation for the Navigation Center. And so they're looking at doing a charity golf tournament, late summer fall, we don't have a date yet to try and, and raise additional monies for the, the Tri-Cities Navigation Center. I'll let you guys know when that is. Generally, the city is, has done a sponsorship or something along those lines for those efforts. I'll let you guys know though, when I hear more about that. Talking about that. And I think that's, that's it, Mayor, be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, anybody on council have questions? I don't hear anybody, well, why don't we adjourn then at six fifty-four PM? And we'll reconvene of a little break and reconvene at seven. Thank you, everybody. All right, welcome back, everybody. Looks like we're ready to get going. Can we have another introduction from Andrea, please?
Thank you for having us here and for practicing language justice. I am here with the communal language co-op, and we are here to help create a space where everyone can participate and engage in the language of their heart or the language that they feel most comfortable in. We will use a simultaneous interpretation to create this space. When I finish saying this in Spanish, we will turn on interpretation and you will see a globe icon that says interpretation. If you are not fully bilingual, please select your preferred language. If you are bilingual, feel free to listen to everyone in their language. When you select your language, you can check mute original audio so you don't hear both languages at the same time. Hola muy buenas tardes, muchas gracias por tenernos aquí para practicar la justicia del lenguaje. Mi nombre es Viria Sosa y estoy aquí con la communal language co-op. Y estamos aquí para ayudar a crear un espacio donde todos puedan participar involucrarse en el idioma de su corazón o en el idioma al que se sientan más cómodos. Usaremos la interpretación simultánea para crear este espacio. Cuando termine de decir esto, activaremos la interpretación y verá un icono de globo que dice interpretación. Le pedimos que seleccione su idioma preferido. Cuando seleccione su idioma preferido, puede hacer clic en silenciar el audio original para que no escuche ambos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Thank you very much, please go ahead and turn on interpretation, muchas gracias.
Thank you, Viria. I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Sheridan City Council for February 27th, 2023, the time is seven oh two PM. Can we have roll call, please? We have all council members present. Can we please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Lent is the solemn Christian religious observance in the trurgical year commemorating the forty days Jesus Christ spent fasting in the desert and enduring temptations by Satan, according to the Apostles of Matthew, Mark, and Luke before beginning his public ministry. Lent began Wednesday, February 22nd, and will end Thursday, April 6th. And this is a Lenten prayer. Confession of sin. Lord Jesus, we come before you in humble confession. Help us conform our lives to you as the model for a holy and righteous living. Forgive us for our desire for personal greatness, for our attempts to make gods of ourselves, for our willingness to exalt ourselves at the expense of others, and for our resistance to serving one another as you have served us. Forgive us for making light of your obedience and sacrifice on the cross by living an undisciplined and indifferent Christian witness. Forgive us for yielding to fear rather than relying on your strength to take the risks of disciples. Forgive us, dear Jesus, for times we have not looked to you as our Lord and for allowing the clamoring distractions of the world to become higher priorities than you. Forgive us for yielding more to the temptations of this world than being transformed by your lordship over our lives. Even now declares the Lord, return to me with all your heart, the fasting and weeping and mourning. Rend your heart and not your garments. Return to the Lord your God, for he is gracious and compassionate, slow to anger and abounding in love. Joel 2:12, 12. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without end, amen. To the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its
Do we have any changes to our agenda tonight?
No changes to the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. First item today is the financial reports. We'll receive and file the financial reports. I have a motion from Councilmember Whitaker, seconded by Councilmember Hall. Is there any discussion on the financial reports? See, and then can we vote, please? That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have staff reports, city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So CML registration has opened. The CML conference will be Sunday, June 25th to Wednesday, June 28th. It'll be held at the Gaylord of the Rockies. If you're interested in going, please let me know, can you register and then get your hotel rooms booked? And it is a minimum two-night stay if you want to stay at the hotel. Please let me know.
I'm letting you know right now.
I'll mark it down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Well, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, city attorney.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you, you have anything additional or city manager?
I don't think so, Mayor, just to let you know. One thing I didn't update on council, but I've talked about recently has been the, the Region Nine opioid meetings and just FYI, there's a, there's another one this week, we're meeting about almost weekly, maybe every other week or so. But be attending that this, this week as well, behalf of the city. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Okay. You have anything for us?
Just a quick update, July 8th will be the day for our night elves, Sheridan Police Department Car Show again over in Sheridan Community Park. As you know, last year we raised around $7,000 for our Sheridan schools and for the student assistance fund. I'd like you all to think about maybe some ideas of nonprofit in our city that we might look at distributing the money to this year. So think about it, there will probably be a few ideas, and we'll see if we can come up with a good one, so July 8th.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we'll move on to the minutes, minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 13th, 2023. I have a motion from Councilmember Hall, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Anybody have any questions on the minutes? All right, we'll vote then. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have the consent agenda authorized dispersments that have been or will be made from February 1st, 2023, the February 15th, 2023, in the amount of $349,660.09 per the reference to an attached transfer of funds. I have a motion from Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Whitaker. Anyone have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? No, we'll vote then, thank you. Oh, it looks like Dallas has a question, go ahead.
Can you repeat that number that you spoke?
The sum.
Can you repeat that sum? Okay. It's not what I have.
It's not what you have, did I? This is, this is on the revised city council packet 22723. I don't know if it changed between the original and revised.
This is, this is what's in front of us to vote on here.
City clerk, do we have a difference on the two different consent agenda amounts?
I'm comparing them right now, just a moment.
Okay, thanks.
It should be the amount of things. No. It's this one. Yeah, I didn't save. My apologies, open meeting has been reflected with the correct amount of $349,660.09 from February 1st to February 15th of 2023.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Any other questions from council? Okay, cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have items for individual consideration. An ordinance on first reading, ordinance number one of 2023. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sheridan, Colorado, amending sections 42-1 and 50-16 of the Sheridan Municipal Code regarding issuance of protective orders. I have a motion from Councilmember Smith, and seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions or discussions on ordinance number one? See, none. Let's vote. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have ordinance number two of 2023. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sheridan, Colorado, amending Article 9 Weapons of Chapter 50 of the Sheridan Municipal Code to prohibit the possession of concealed firearms in designated city buildings and other sensitive places. I have a motion by Councilmember Whitaker, and seconded by Councilmember Dagel. Anyone have any questions or discussion on ordinance number two? All right, we'll vote then. And that motion is approved unanimously. We have one resolution, Resolution Number 9 of 2023. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sheridan, Colorado, approving the first amended intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Sheridan, Englewood, Littleton, and the County of Rappahoe, Colorado, for the development of a tri-cities homelessness coordinator position. We have a motion from Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Dagel. Any discussion on Resolution 9? All right, we'll cast votes then. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have the memo regarding the volunteer firefighter semi-annual report. Is there anything that you wanted to add to that memo? Ms. Adler?
So where we're looking at is on page 61 of your board packet. The volunteer fire is required twice a year to give their report to the City Council. That is required in February and August. The thought being that in February, you would get your end, and then August, you're going to get where it's at halfway through the year. So that's what is happening here. So as you can see on page 61, where I'm looking at is the column that says actual January through December 2022. It's like the third column of numbers over. So what that first section is, is that's our checking account, and that's where the city deposits their $50,000 that then gets transferred on to FPPA. And you guys approve that every year during the budget. Then moving on down to the second section, this is the actual pension fund. And so where we're at there, as far as our ending fund balance is pretty close to where we had thought the adopted budget would be at. There's two big differences that actually happened this year. If you look at the net benefits, we always adopt that as a higher number. And then it comes in usually a little less, but we will make sure to have enough. But the other thing this year, with everything that's going on with inflation and everything, the unrealized gains were a negative $27,400. Again, that's an unrealized loss. It's not a realized loss, but we still have to show it. So we're still sitting very strong. We still ended with a $272,867 fund balance. So I'm not concerned at this point, but I just wanted to point that out, that why there was that large number there. So I'm happy to answer. Sorry, I'm happy to answer any questions on the volunteer fire.
Thank you. Any questions? Does it sound like there's any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mayor's Choice. I had a few things I just wanted to follow up on. A couple were about the financials for this week. They are things that I you know, I needed to know to vote on it, but I wanted to ask about whether sorry, I've got voting up here.
I'm on a mayor. We have a motion and a vote on the volunteer firefighters semi-annual report.
Okay, sorry. Let's go ahead and get a motion then.
Well, just to accept it? Okay.
I didn't get any motions. We've just got voting. Is that okay? Okay, let's back up. Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Hall, and seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Now we can cast some votes. Waiting on someone. Oh, there we go. Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Sorry for going ahead into the next thing. So I wanted to ask about whether we feel like we're funding our capital improvement fund adequately. And we haven't gone through it in a while. So maybe that's just kind of a tickler, you know, to you, Mr. Granbury, to maybe we should have a discussion about that. Are we feeling like we're putting aside enough in there to be able to support our needs?
Okay.
Yeah.
And Devin, we did talk about this a little bit.
Right.
Okay.
We have it on the calendar.
Yeah, when budget kind of comes around, when we're kind of compiling that. So like in July or August, I think that was when we were going to do it kind of with the budget. But if you'd like it before then.
No, that's fine. I just, you know, I keep seeing our fund balance going up, and I'm wondering if some of that ought to be instead going to capital improvement fund, you know?
Yeah, so we thank you to staff because it jogged my memory. We were trying to discuss when would be the best time to have that discussion with council. We'd try probably a little bit closer to budget season, so then we wouldn't have to have it twice.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds fine. I just wanted to make sure it's out there to talk about.
Right.
The other question I saw from the budget was it looked like we only spent 50% of the amount we had budgeted for administrative. Was there anything in particular we didn't get done? Or, you know, why was that so far under what we had budgeted?
So I thought maybe I put this in my memo, and I apologize if I didn't. We put the full amount of the ARPA money, so the 1.5 million. And so we only, we didn't spend everything. So that's why it was so much higher this year, but that's also why we didn't spend it all. And I also only recognized about half of the revenue. So we'll wrap that up next year. It's just moving into next year, so.
Okay, maybe I just didn't put those pieces together, that that was relating to the administrative line, you know?
And I get in my nerdism and kind of get focused, so I apologize.
Okay, thanks. That helps. I just wanted to bring up, I know Randy's not there, but Mr. Lovato called me this week, and he's concerned that he hasn't seen any police patrols lately in his neighborhood, which, you know, is the Knosa, the Knosa and Bryant area there. And he also was looking for an update on the status of the apartments that had a fire up in his neighborhood. So if we could follow up on those items, I would appreciate it. And then I was going to go to the South Suburban Parks and Recreation Draft Master Plan presentation this week, but I was sick, so I didn't go to that. I don't know. City Manager, have you seen a copy of that draft come out?
I haven't personally seen it, but I know our staff is in touch with South Suburban staff on that and is tied into that loop, so I'm not quite sure if they've distributed. I think that they've been doing it at a staff level, but maybe not publicly quite yet.
Okay, well, they launched it to electeds this week. So I wonder if somebody could track down a copy of that and send it out to council.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. That's it. That's all I have. Thank you. So can move on to Councilmember's choice. Go ahead. Councilmember Dagel.
The mic on?
I did not attend the Dr. Cog meeting last week because I also had a cold and didn't want to share. So I however, it's online. If any of you want to go and look and read all however many hundreds of pages of notes that that has developed. And then the other thing, I received the City Magazine and Activities Guide for Englewood, and I'm wondering, I don't know, can you see that? If you can't, maybe that would be an answer to the newspaper. It has, it's got different tabs in it. There's a tab for what's going on in the recreation facility. So there's, you know, the costs and different programs that they're having. There's a library one. There's, of course, they have their aquatics because they have a pool over there. Then there's adult fitness. All kinds of different things. Places to eat, what to eat, different activities that they're going to be doing. Heart events and what have you. So it's kind of cool. I don't know why. It actually came to my grandson. Really sure, but it came to my address, so I thought it was kind of nifty. And maybe that could be, you know, a way to get stuff out to community members. I don't know. But I thought it would be kind of a nifty.
Do you mean in that publication?
Or, you know, maybe doing one of our own. I don't know if we could do one of our own.
They do that quarterly.
They do it quarterly. We could do it annually or biannually even.
Like an annual report, kind of a thing.
Yeah, and then maybe would have, you know, when we're going to have our Parker Blues, or when Sheridan celebrates happens, or, you know, some of the events that's happening at the VFW and the library and those kinds of things. Just a thought.
Okay.
Anybody else from council who has anything to share? Go ahead. Councilmember Whitaker.
Yeah, I just figured, love it or hate it, this might be a good time to mention the photo radar and red light camera enforcement. It's worth mentioning that they're not unconstitutional. Hundreds of cities across the US use these enforcement tools, including Denver, Boulder, and Fort Collins. Sheridan strictly adheres to the state statutes that govern the use of photo radar and red light cameras. All fines are set by the state statute. Numerous studies have shown that photo radar and photo red light cameras reduce speeding and serious accidents. Sheridan holds photo radar and red light court once per month where people can challenge violations, but we average less than 10 challenges a month.
Thank you.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
I can tell you that the photo radar is stationed in school district zone on Lowell over here on Federal, and then over by Alice Terry. We've had five children in the last I've been on school board for, oh my God, 13 years or something like that. And in those years, five children have been hit by cars in school zones by vehicles that were speeding. So I'm all for it myself. If you don't, if you have an issue with them, I think it was Mr. Flur that had said one time, if you have an issue with having your picture taken, then don't speed. I do believe that we had the police chief run a report. It's been several years ago, and the average ticket was for, I believe it was 52 miles per hour in a school zone, which means if you know anything about averaging, there was much higher, much faster speeds in those zones at that time. So I'm all for it. Keep our kids safe. They only put them in school zones, so. And if you have a problem with it, well.
Thank you both for your comments. Any other council members who want to share anything tonight? I don't see anything. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Public comments will not exceed 30 minutes, and we'll have three minutes per speaker. We're going to start with the people who signed up in the room. The first person on the list is John Smith.
Hello. The first thing that I would like to address is the last time that we were here, Mr. Whitaker's girlfriend or fiancee. She, I watched one of her public comments that she made prior, and she said that she is a free speech absolutist, but that you must use decorum when exercising your free speech. Decorum is defined as behavior in keeping with good taste. So I was just wanting to ask everyone, she's not here, but if she believes that decorum is bumping into my girlfriend several times, blocking her camera, she actually grabbed it and pulled it down and broke the gimbal.
That's wrong.
Excuse me, this is not your time to talk. And she actually committed harassment, CRS 18-9-111 subsection C, strikes, shoves, kicks, or otherwise subjects to physical contact. So that's funny that, you know, she was the one that was assaulting my girlfriend, essentially. And, but she wants to use decorum. I'd like to also talk about this administrative order. Is my time getting paused here?
It's still running. You're still on. Go ahead. What's the issue? Is there something going on here?
I'd like to address this administrative order that says that in accordance with the authority granted to the city manager by pursuant section 7.3 of the Sheridan Home Rule Charter. So I don't know if you guys have read section 7.3. Mr. Whitaker says he did. But it does say that subsection C, established with city council approval and implement personnel rules and regulations for city employees. That is the authority that Mr. Granberry is claiming that he has to write this order. Keyword here, regulations for city employees, not for the citizens. You're not a legislator. Okay? And it says here that with city council approval, and there's actually no public record of you guys voting on this. So you guys have to approve this order. So you guys aren't doing your job correctly. And real quick, I wanted to talk also about, Mr. Whitaker, you said that it's not unconstitutional. There's been several jurisdictions that have actually gotten rid of those because they are unconstitutional. It doesn't grant your Sixth Amendment right to face your accuser. And they don't actually keep speeding down. I believe it was in Montana in 1995. They actually got rid of a bunch of speed limits, and they found that there was actually zero increase in fatalities from speeding, because it's actually true that people will use common sense. And just because there's not a law, doesn't mean people are going to drive 60 down Broadway, right? And then people that are going to violate that anyways, we're going to speed regardless of whether there's a speed limit or not. So that's actually totally not true, Mr. Whitaker. In fact, the way that a lot of engineers decide the speed limits is they take a measurement of everyone's speed. They take the top 10% that's going the fastest and take them out, and the bottom 10% that's going the slowest and take them out. And then they average everyone else's speed, because if everyone's traveling roughly the same speed, that's what makes the roads safe. But people are going to drive the way they're going to drive regardless if there's a speed limit. So I just wondered, Martinez, if I bump into a bunch of people here, all your friends, are you going to arrest me? Or is that going to be cool, like you let his girlfriend do?
Your time is up, sir. Next up, we have F in reality.
Hello, everyone. I'm really upset that I missed the pizza last night. So I came today. It's all right.
Got to show up, man.
I guess so. Here I am. My friends and family don't carry guns to conduct government business. They don't act scared for their lives hiding behind people with guns either. My friends carry cameras and pocket constitutions, and they act brave. Unarmed, asking you simply do your jobs, and that is met with violence. It's met with a gang of thugs and all their friends and family acting thuggish alongside of them, attempting to create a deadly encounter with unarmed, nonviolent activists. None of us are violent. In fact, all the evidence for that claim is available to you with a free YouTube subscription. Hundreds of hours where you can watch all these people and how they never accomplish their goals with threats of violence. And they never carry out any acts of violence. So let's all admit that the fear being claimed to generate a violent encounter is being manufactured. It's not reality. Y'all better get your acts together immediately, stand up for what's right, drop all the charges against the people you arrested and destroy that administrative order that is unconstitutional and was put in place by someone who has no right to pass laws or rules for anyone that is not a Sheridan employee. Limiting who can speak is only making this process take longer. If any of you have the guts to do what's right, now's the time to do better. Elevate humanity. Show what you're made of because so far no one's impressed by how you handled this situation. Except your friends and family, of course.
And the residents of Sheridan.
Excuse me, don't interrupt the speaker, please.
Please. If you have any issue with having your pictures taken, don't work in government. We're allowed to take your pictures. We're allowed to film our encounters. We're allowed to exist. That's our right. And you guys can't infringe on it no matter how hard you try. We'll keep showing up. Here's a little math for you. There's 6,000 residents in Sheridan, only 2,000 registered to vote. I could easily get 200, 300 activists out here and we could canvass it in a weekend. It's not Denver. It's two city blocks. It would be too easy to show them what you guys are really up to around here. And I do live around here, Jay. Take it easy.
Next, we have Chris Hunt.
My name is Christopher Michael Hunt. Like to start off with a quote, please. "The functionaries of every government have propensities to command at will the liberty and property of their constituents. There is no safe deposit for these freedoms, but with the people themselves, nor can they be safe with their freedoms without information. Where the press is free, every man and every man able to read it, all is safe." That was said over 200 years ago by Thomas Jefferson. From over 200 years ago, it is, is it possible that this brilliant architect of our republic could have foreseen what would happen in a small town of 6,000 men and women that is far removed from Independence Hall in Pennsylvania? More likely, his inspired, this inspired statesman was given a, giving a warning to future generations to hold tight to the liberties bought through the shedding of blood, the snapping of bones, the wrenching of flesh and sinew, the suffering of patriots and the tears of their loved ones. By any measure, freedom and liberty has been bought at a terrible cost. Anyone who carelessly swipes aside the God-given rights of free men and women because they make another uncomfortable or annoyed or insulted or scared or whatever butthurt term you want to give it, cheapens the sacrifice of every patriot from the Revolutionary War to today. Every one of them. These unpatriotic people deserve neither deference nor attention in either, and they are either ignorant of liberty's high cost or more likely attempting to suppress them. Thus, when a public employee like the spoiled man child seated, seated to my left and seated next to a uniformed thug tries to infringe on the rights of free men and women, the press is necessary to view it, to document it, to investigate it, to disseminate it. And every citizen should loathe what they find out when they see it. In fact, investigating, documenting, and disseminating information on government actions, worrying actions, finances, abuses, frauds, waste, and any and every other action of government is the very reason the First Amendment was written. How can, how can the vital check on government's powerful functions be done if a gutless bureaucrat can arbitrarily and capriciously place limits on the First Amendment? Perhaps you don't care. Or your indifference to the actions of these two employees seem to indicate that you do not. And let me also say, since I have 15 seconds left, nothing makes people more unsafe than gun-free zones. Look at the mass shootings that have happened around this country. Where have they occurred?
Your time is up.
In gun-free zones. Sick.
Your time is up, sir. Next up is Blind American. Next, Blind American.
It's a shame I wasn't able to get here in time last time we did this to offer my comments, but I am here today. And it is, it is irony that we are here at the medieval duchy of Sheridan. That's all it is, is a medieval duchy. We've got Granberry as the duke and we've got Martinez as the general. But no one else that's elected is holding their oath to the Constitution. Where is liberty? Where is it written that Sally over here gets to be the chaplain? Yeah, I don't care for you generally reflecting. You can observe a moment of silence if you want, but there is separation of religion and state in this country. So I am sick of that. I am also sick of the free pass that is given to an unelected representative and in a uniformed thug who brought in his family last time to conflate violence on peaceful citizens who peacefully exercising their constitutionally protected rights. I will also add, where is morality written in the Constitution? Where is morality written in the First Amendment? There's no words about morality in the First Amendment. They'll take your morality and shove it down the toilet for all I care because there is no morality written on that paper. The administrative order that we have here, that is, for all intents and purposes, it should be written on toilet paper because it is nothing. It is an ordinance for the employees of the city, not for peaceful citizens who are coming here to exercise their constitutionally protected rights to film. I was here proudly on December 14th with 15 other free American men and women who were peacefully exercising their rights to film and do open records requests and to hold our public servants accountable, our elected public servants accountable in this little tiny little bit of a town here. I wouldn't even call it a city because of how small it is. But I will state this, I will state this, that you should be ashamed of yourselves for not taking control of the situation because this has got to change fast because otherwise it's going to keep on spiraling down and spiraling down and spiraling down and spiraling down. And the Martinez crime family is going to continue this, get this escalated to, to inflict harm on peaceful Americans who are exercising their rights. Thank you.
Next, Regan.
Hello again. My name is Regan. Right to the point, facts on the record. Number one, and I quote, with added quote for a grammatical error. "The actions of Denver Metro Auditson Benson could have dire consequences and their actions must be curtailed before a deadly encounter is unnecessarily forced on officers." End quote. This was written by a city of Sheridan employee by the name of Jeffrey Martinez in a three-page victim impact statement where Jeffrey attempts to display himself as a victim of a crime to the Arapahoe County DA's office, yet he fails miserably at defining what crime he's referring to. This is called false reporting resulting in departing from the truth. Aside from the nonsense and supporting an employee that lies, you, city council, are supporting an employee that is making physical threats to use force on law-abiding citizens who have simply offended him with their speech. That's right, ladies and gentlemen. Whose sole purpose, you think, is to protect bad actors within your city government? You've made it more than clear your interest in service to a citizenry is dependent on being accepted into the Granberry Martinez club of thugs where instigators and perpetrators of violence are lifted up in celebration and prayer, Sally. And accolades for a job well done. Shame on you and shame on all of you. I suppose Jeffrey and Devon have failed to inform you that there is in fact an ongoing criminal investigation into the city's police department concerning very troubling communications. Somebody's got their head down over there. Well, let me be the first to tell you, there is. In fact, there is. Mayor, perhaps you should demand your $185,000 a year city manager and his expensive town attorney, Bill Hayashi, into an executive session on the matter because once again, the legal liability on the hook to taxpayers for this city's bad behavior is going to be a very important and embarrassing topic of conversation. Number two point I'd like to bring up as it relates to facts on the record. Were you aware that your municipal judge threatened to throw me in jail for 60 days citing contempt for asking him a question after he and his court clerk asked me if I had any questions while I was silently observing his courtroom? Certainly the court record would reveal that, right? Yeah, I did that records request and guess what? Bill Hayashi is working for the police department and it's now part of a Criminal Justice Records Act. The only court record in the state of Colorado that just magically fell under a Colorado Criminal Justice Records Act to hide. What's the problem, Sheridan?
Your time is up.
Boom.
Time is up. Next, we have Randy. Randy.
This is my first time in your city council meeting. And you guys brought me here. By the ridiculous nature of you guys not protecting the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. You, Sally, you read a prayer before this. How would you like to be arrested for reading that prayer at the city council meeting? How would you like your First Amendment rights violated, thrown in a cage, searched in your private areas while you're thrown in a cage by these two pieces of crap thugs over here who don't even understand that you don't even have privacy in a public area? If you want privacy, you have to make the privacy, Granberry, you stupid, stupid man. You don't understand the First Amendment of the Constitution? Martinez, you don't understand free press? Do you know that sets us aside from all the crappy nations in this world? North Korea, what happens to you if you go film in public in North Korea? You get thrown in a cage. What happens if you record in public in Venezuela? Or Russia? What happens in those countries without free press? Free press is a very, very, very important part of this constitution. And you guys don't allow people to film in a public area? What the hell is wrong with you two? You are absolutely ridiculously stupid and you need to find new jobs. Here's the thing, these videos, they're going to last forever. And your family right now might be supporting you, giving you pats on the back, but your great grandchildren, your great, great grandchildren are going to watch these videos and think, damn, Devon Granberry is a piece of crap and I don't want to associate with him as a member of my family. Same with you, Martinez. Your great, great grandchildren are going to watch these videos hundreds of years from now and realize what a piece of crap both of you are. And I just want to let everybody know, today is a national holiday. Every day is a national holiday. Happy fuck the cops day.
Next, we have Sal. Sal.
Thank you very much. Wow, we had an interesting meeting last time we were here when we had AC came here to use our right and exercise for freedom of assembly that safeguarded by the First Amendment. As soon as we came in here, we were instigated by Martinez's family. We were assaulted by Whitaker's girlfriend. We were not, excuse me. Like, 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 like. When we came in, we were courteous, we were professional, we were quiet. His family were the ones that instigated from the get-go, from the get-go. We have multiple angles of it happening. It is a shame how Desiree sitting right there ignoring everybody that has came up here. She's too busy doing her, I don't know, one on her computer. And I appreciate you guys at least listening to us. I appreciate the veterans that have died for us to do what we're doing right now and our freedom to express our feelings towards a chief that completely failed us last time. He sat there and escalated and not de-escalated any situation. His brother was side by side with the police when they were pushing us out, when they told us we were going to be arrested for trespassing, but yet he is allowed to come back inside the building when we were all supposedly going to be trespassed? That is unconstitutional. It is ridiculous. It's embarrassing how you're going to let an officer dictate how to run your city. The city manager is going to end up bankrupt in this city. You just wait. It's going, it's just bound to happen. We came in here in peace. We came in here not wanting any type of violence. And from the get-go, this gentleman started, started, everybody that came up talking over them, talking over us, talking over everybody. And you guys just sat there and allowed it. Not you, not you, but you definitely did. You definitely allowed it to happen. So it is very, I cannot imagine how you guys sleep in the morning, waking up, thinking that Sheridan is a sovereign city, the city, city that anybody that drives from New York to California can't stop in Sheridan and be treated as a citizen because they don't live in Sheridan? That's ridiculous. It's America as a whole, the whole United States. It's not just Sheridan. Sheridan will be, mark my words, bankrupt if this continues to be a trend. It needs to stop, Madam Mayor, please. It needs to stop. And again, if you want privacy, create it. Don't expect it. Your council member, I appreciate your effort, your time, but it's ridiculous what went on last time. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Pete Mitchell. Pete Mitchell.
So I'd just like to start off by saying that none of you are allowed to look at me. Put your head down, right? That, that, that's legal. I can tell you to do that, right? No, I can't. Why? Because I have no expectation of privacy in public. Period. End of sentence. And you know, it's funny, I know my rights. And to date, the 10th Circuit Court, of which Colorado is a part, in fact, it resides right here in Denver. Okay, has affirmed the rights of citizens to film our public officials in the performance of their duties. The 10th has stated, right, the right for, for the record falls squarely, and I'm quoting now, falls squarely within the First Amendment's core purpose to protect free and robust discussion of public affairs, hold government accountable, and check abuse of power. Let's discuss abuse of power. Abuse of power in its simplest form is the misuse of a position or power or a position of power to take advantage of individuals, organizations, or governments. The policy that Granberry put in place is a perfect example of an abuse of power. It states that you all have to vote on this policy before it can be put into place. Yet, there's nothing in any of the minutes from the time before that was put in place till now, where not one vote has been taken place on this. So therefore, he has abused his power. He has the ability as city manager to enforce city council ordinances, resolutions, policies, and other directives. Two, work with all department heads to administer policies and directives. Now I'm paraphrasing these down. Three, establish with the city council approval and implement personal rules and regulations for city employees. Four, cause a proposed budget. Five, prepare and submit reports of a fine, of all financials monthly and yearly. Six, supervise all city departments and employees. Seven, employ and dismiss all city employees. Eight, attend city council meetings. Eight, attend city council meetings in an advisory role only. Nine, be responsible for informing the public on city functions and activities. And ten, to perform such other duties as prescribed by this charter or as required by the council and not inconsistent with this charter or any codes, ordinance, or laws. Well, let's see. The supreme law of the land would be the US Constitution. The very First Amendment to that constitution has five protections. Speech, religion, freedom of press, freedom to redress our government, and the freedom to assemble. And everybody that says just because they think I don't live in this town, that I don't have the right to be here? Y'all take federal money, I have the right to address you.
Next, we have Alex Aguilera.
Thank you all. Fellow members of the public and board members of the Sheridan City Council, Police Chief Martinez, Mayor Granberry, I have one question for you. What in God's name is going on here? What is going on? Really? You're better than this. I can see it. You're better than this. And we had this conversation, Chief. I'd like for you all to take a moment to step out of the nonsense and madness going on at this time and take a brief thirty-thousand-foot view of the issue at hand. I know it's hard to do so when you're caught up in the ordeal. Close your eyes for a second if you have the ability to do so and think about where you are right now and what exactly you're doing. If you are a city council member, a police chief, or a town mayor and have the capacity and power to stop this nonsense, shame on you for not having the gall to do so and for being the first to speak up. If you're a member of the public, but you're really here on behalf of a council member or police officer or other city staff, I urge you to value yourself as a professional and individual as well as a human being enough to be able to use your intellect to solve such a simple issue. If you're a camera person exercising your free rights and contesting things you don't believe in, ask yourself if there's room to improve yourself in the way you conduct yourself in your capacity, regardless of how many tyrannical and out-of-control publicly funded employees you've encountered. I'm mad, guys. You see, none of us are perfect, none of us. In the Bible, it says, let he who has no sins cast the first stone, right? We gotta do better than this. We are adults. Shame on all of us. Everybody here who hasn't done anything to fix this problem, shame on you. May your legacy contain better than this. Because this is not the hill you die on. And every single one of you, I think, knows that. These folks have the right to record in public. If you don't like it, create privacy, invest in technology like a frickin' window film that disallows that to be recorded. Train your staff on how to interact with First Amendment auditors. You may not like it as much as I don't like red lights, but we gotta abide. We gotta have a constitution that allows us to follow rules, laws. And this is not it. Getting into a petty dick-measuring contest over who, who, who's, this isn't it. This isn't the hill to die on. We agreed on just about every topic that we spoke about when we sat down, Chief. And I think you're a reasonable man. And I think the majority of the people in this building are reasonable people. Yet, I walked in here and I'm seeing a dick-measuring contest that does not need to take place anymore. Do better, brother. Do better, don't get pulled into things you don't want to get pulled into.
Next, we have Indira Guzman.
Madam Mayor, we're out of time.
Oh, okay. Thank you, everybody, for your comments tonight. And we'll adjourn this regular meeting at seven fifty-five PM. And we're going to go right into our Sheridan Redevelopment Agency meeting. I'll call it order the, this meeting of the Sheridan Redevelopment Agency for February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. We still have all.
Give me one moment to get the software up.
Sure.
Councilor might have to sign in again on the, on the open meeting.
Thanks, you guys.
Good to see you guys. Good to see you.
Okay, and the meeting has been loaded, go ahead and connect.
Thanks.
That's good, yep.
We have roll call, please.
You won't need that. Thanks, you guys, for coming.
You as well, yeah.
Whenever we're ready for roll call, it's hard for me to tell what's happening.
Councilmember Daigle, can you go ahead and sign in?
I'm in. Try it again. Try it again, Sal.
Okay, we're, we're moving on to our meetings now, please, everybody. Thank you. Good work. Okay, we're moving on with our meeting now.
Thanks, Devon.
Now, Gay should be able to do, yep, there we go.
We got everybody?
Missing, Daigle.
Councilmember Daigle, can you go ahead and mark present?
All right, we have all board members present. First item is the approval of the minutes, minutes of the SRA regular meeting of January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. And I've got a motion by Board Member Kelly, second by Board Member Smith. Anybody have any questions on the minutes? If not, let's vote. That motion is approved unanimously. Next are the financial reports, receive and file the financial reports. Motion's made by Board Member Stang, and second by Board Member Smith. Any questions on the financials? Go ahead and vote. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have the approval of dispersments. Authorized dispersments that have been or will be made for expenses in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand ninety dollars and thirty-seven cents, as referenced below. Legal expenses, none. Other professional services, eight thousand nine seventy-six sixty-three. City support services, one hundred and thirty thousand three seventy-eight. Other expenses, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Have a motion by Board Member Smith and second by Board Member Daigle. Need discussion on the dispersments. Have a vote then. That motion is approved unanimously. New business pinnacle report for January twenty-twenty-three.
Good evening, everyone. So where I am looking at is page thirteen. So have a little good news and bad news mixed in on my report this month. But looking at, we'll just start off on the variance analysis. I know I've said this before, our B-bond payments were higher. So we are going to need to bring a twenty-twenty-two budget amendment to you. I would like to wrap up all of the year-end entries and kind of have that first meet with the auditors the first week of April to make sure they don't have any adjustments. And then, so I'll bring that to you, hopefully in April is when I'll bring it to you just so that we don't have to do it twice or anything like that. So that's on the variance announces. On the new retailers, moving down to Tuesday morning, we received a notification that that store is closing at River Point. We did reach out to Kimco. They'd heard about it the day before we had, so they didn't have a much advance notice. They haven't heard when they're closing. So we've asked them if they do hear to let us know and vice versa. So as far as that, as far as looking at revenue projections, I did kind of do kind of some quick math on Tuesday morning. As far as making our debt service payments, the only thing that it will affect is possibly the B-bond payments, which is, you know, those, that is subordinate debt. So that's where we will be, have no problem paying our regular debt service payments. The good news is, Five Below is actually working on taking over almost half of that building. And so hopefully, we'll keep seeing that move. I'm going to do a little more research on Five Below to see as far as kind of what their average sales are to kind of see if I can do some projections on that and based on when they will open. Excuse me, the other thing is, the last item is Regal Theater. We did receive a Chapter eleven bankruptcy. They still remain open, we haven't heard that they're closing. So we're just going to keep an eye on that. Again, did some, some quick numbers if they would close for both the city and the SRA. I, I don't, I don't have concerns at this time. You know, again, with the SRA, it would just be the B-bond payments. And as far as what they bring into the city, it's, it isn't enough that we wouldn't be able to make our expenditure payments. So, so if they would, would close. So that's where we're at with the retailers. Looking at our pledge revenues, for our first full month of this year, we were four point eight eight percent higher. So always like that to see that it's always continues to grow. And, and I know you all love the graph, so I made it a bright blue so everyone can see that. Then going on down with everything. So filed our fourth quarter report with JP Morgan that was due. Again, the twenty-twenty-three budget and the budget amendment were filed. And we are working fast and furiously on the audit. And so I don't foresee any problems with that, and that's scheduled the first week of April. So a lot of information, and so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Teresa. I wanted to touch base again, I think a few months ago I had asked whether we could do some modeling for when we finish for twenty-twenty-six, I guess is what I want to say. You know, when we get, get to the point where we take back the sales tax revenue.
And, and so, and, and my thought that was with, with the capital discussion, that's when I was going to do that was, is, is, in my brain. So that's what I thought I was going to do is kind of in twenty-twenty-nine, when those are paid off, then what that means, what it looks like for the city and getting that back. So I was going to be kind of doing those projections, so. But I am happy to do that, you know, I'm, I'm always excited to run numbers, so.
Yeah, I mean, what I, what I'd love to have is, you know, if you can set something up that is a little model that we can keep using going forward and you can adjust each year and see, you know, how that's looking as we get closer and closer to day. You know, I think that would reap a real benefit to people on subsequent councils as we get closer.
Absolutely, I can, I can totally do that. So that'll make me happy. So, okay, I will do that for, I will bring that to the next month's meeting.
Yeah, if you have time, and I know you're getting ready for audits. So if it gets too tight, it's not that urgent, you know? It's a few years away still.
It is fun to run the numbers.
Yeah.
Yes.
But also to Teresa's point, you know, it does, it will mesh well with our, our capital budget discussions as too. It's like looking at that long term. It will absolutely mesh well, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else have any new business? Okay, I don't see anybody looking like they have any, so.
Oh, Mayor, one, one other thing, I just wanted to, to kind of reiterate, I know Teresa touched on it, but this isn't really new business, just following up on the updates on, on Tuesday morning. We, I, I think that we were under the impression that they were looking at downsizing Tuesday morning and splitting space with Five Below. And I think that was the same impression that Kimco was under. And so all reports that we got from them is that it was as much surprise to them as it was to us when kind of everybody learned about it in the paper at the same time. So in the news, so, yeah.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn for tonight. Thank you, everybody, it's eight oh seven PM.
Thank you, good night.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Teresa.